All right, bang, bang, the gavel. It is April 20th, 2020. I call this meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to order. Marty Pitt, sorry, Marty Pitt will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Ronnie Reese will be leading us in the prayer. Ronnie, if you would, please go first.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for the day and for the good things that you've done for us. Pray that you continue to hold your hand in protection over Alexander County as we go through this COVID-19. Pray for all our county citizens, our employees, our emergency services, all those that just protect us each day. Pray for this meeting and that, that we make wise choices as we go forward. Pray for all our nation and all the leaders from the president, all the way down to the local county, town. All those are making decisions that we'd be united in one thought process to restore our economy. And pray that you'd give us a fast recovery that would be fast and would be progressive and would be safe at the same time. Pray for a meeting and that, that we make wise decisions. All this we ask in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Let's all stand. A little unorthodox, but let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We salute pledge, a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we've lost Chad. Chad there? There he is. Okay. Um, okay, Commissioner's report. Is there anything any of the commissioners would like to report on? Somebody, come on.
I do want to touch base with, um, uh, let everyone know that, um, uh, the COVID-19 has been monitored very closely by, by different entities in our county. Something that we took serious prior to any cases here and it's still being taken very serious at the moment. I think our counties, our citizens, our folks, they've done a wonderful job in keeping our cases down to a bare minimum, single digits, and I think they should be applauded for that. And if anything comes out of this, it would be, um, you know, watch your hygiene and washing them hands and staying right off the top of people. Another thing would be, um, uh, I think by now everyone has probably financially started feeling the effects, if not more so. You know, and I think that there's light at the end of the tunnel, so we need to keep pressing forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say too, uh, it is a strange time. People are meeting in different ways from church to everything in between, but hopefully our county citizens has more time to maybe spend eating meals together and, you know, and together. And I think, as Marty said, hopefully we're getting ready to come out of this thing. So I hope that we continue to be safe as we try to reopen things and, uh, going forward. And continue to pray for President, all the things that he's doing and, uh, the job that he's doing and our governor, that everybody would work together.
Okay, great. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Chad, if you would, would you put our agenda up for everyone to see? Is it showing?
I don't see it.
I see a, you know, a computer screen. I'm sorry to put you on the spotlight. It was up just for a second.
There it is. There you go.
Okay, there we go. Um, I, public comment, I'm sure we're not having anything on public comment. Is that correct?
Yes, no one responded. Nobody responded.
Okay, well, we'll, uh, move on to, uh, number two, item number two.
Adopt our agenda, correct?
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
We have to adopt the agenda, correct?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Uh, yes, the agenda is before you. Uh, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Yoder.
Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Yoder, I heard you.
I was gonna make a motion to approve the, the agenda as is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand or saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, item number one on the agenda, no one signed up. So we will move on to item number two, which is a public hearing, approval of road names, Nest Lane, Oliver's Cove Drive and Water Drive. Uh, Mr. French, do you have that? I can't see it on my.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a continued, uh, public hearing from our last meeting. The staff has reviewed all the names, they meet regulations, um, and those names are recommended. As you stated, Nest Lane, Oliver's Cove Drive and Riverside Drive and Water Drive. And if there's no one making any comments, it'd be appropriate, I guess, to, for the board, take action to approve those road name changes. Or road names, new road names.
We, uh, do we need to open up the public hearing again, or is it just continued?
It's continued.
Okay, is there a, uh, motion to approve the road names?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Yoder, we wish to make a motion to approve the islands on the road, on the names of the roads being changed.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Okay, we have second. Um, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passed as unanimously. Okay, we'll go to, uh, item number three on the agenda. Chad, you're gonna have to put that up because my paperwork is not showing up, so I don't have, I don't have it laid out. You're gonna have to flip over to it. Okay, so COVID-19 update, Leanne Wisnig, uh, our installed human services director and Douglas Gillespie, director of public services and Rick French, county manager. Go ahead, Mr. French.
Um, I'll go ahead and let Leanne and Doug move forward. I've got a couple of things at the end.
Okay.
All right, I actually have, um, your update ready for you and it was ready at five o'clock and I had to do an edit. We received our fourth confirmed positive case report just a few minutes before five o'clock this afternoon. So we, we did add one more, uh, which is still great numbers, keeping it very low. This is a healthcare worker that is not ill. She is not sick at the moment, um, but was working in a facility out of county that has lots of cases. And so we are, um, going to follow up with that immediately. So we currently have done over 125 test results in, or positive cases. The, um, new process, the governor is laying out new testing formats. We're not ready to implement at this point, but we're hoping to very soon. He is trying to secure more testing materials and items so that we could do more testing of people that, um, testing, tracing and is the next plan, so that we can actually see how many people have, um, had the disease, maybe have immunity. So we know more going forward. Um, and so we're still waiting on that. We actually, um, I'd like to thank SureTape. They actually donated to, um, Doug Gillespie and I, emergency management and, um, public health in the county, almost 2,000 N95 masks. So we do thank them greatly. That, um, was a wonderful donation. And so with the moment, we, we have enough testing for the, for the clients that are needing, that are acutely ill, but we don't, um, we're still waiting for more supplies to do mass testing, and that is the next future step. We're waiting to see how that next, um, governor's rollout plan will be. We are going back to more case tracing, which Public Health does. We do that well. We always have done that. There's nothing new to us. But when the numbers started rising so greatly, they, um, you've heard me say before that they stopped reporting those persons being tested to us. So we're gonna go back to that. And, and I think that's a much better plan because then we can actually track, um, and, and follow those cases and know their contacts, whether, you know, they were, they were exposed at work, you know, exactly, try to trace down where they were exposed to this virus. So, um, do you have any questions for me? Um, or would Doug, you wanna do your emergency management part next?
That's up to them. Uh, doesn't bother me either way.
Question?
Yes, sir.
A couple items. One, this certainly is a matter of public health and all items of public health get reported. If you guys in the health department, you know, have that centralized database, I would like to think they could do this the same way. Would only make sense to me. It's getting reported somewhere, so why can't it just be like measles or anything else would be that gets reported to you? That, that's my first wonder. Uh, the second piece is, is what does, what actually does the increased testing do for us? I mean, if people are really, you know, I mean, those who are really sick are going for medical treatment, those who are not are at home. What does the increase in testing do? Um, I guess what I'm saying is the people who are really sick are, we're finding that out anyhow, correct?
We are, yes. And we, we've had no one hospitalized from our county due to COVID, um, which is wonderful. And we are getting notified of the positives. The, the process prior was we were notified when people were tested. And that is new because normally, like, like any other communicable disease, let's pick, pick something else. Pick, um, pick HIV. We're not notified every time a physician's office tests somebody for another communicable disease. So really, this process is the same, but with this being a new illness and so critical, we like getting those persons under investigation report forms because then we could track that, we could monitor that. We just had a little better knowledge of how many people were being tested even in our county. I think that changed with the state because as it grew and got so big, some of those counties were not able to keep up. Like when Mecklenburg County had a thousand positive cases, they probably had 10,000 or more people tested. So, you know, their public health workforce just couldn't keep up with that. We could in Alexander, but they're gonna do things statewide. So we weren't for that. But they're gonna try to go back to that. I think we've had time to get more workforce in place, more volunteers in place. The rationale behind testing more is to know the prevalence. Going forward, as we open back up our economy and go back to work, it would help us to know if people were immune or not. It would help us to know these people that are asymptomatic, like, like the fourth case that we got right now. Her test came back positive today, but she's not been sick. So knowing some of that can hopefully help us stop her from being out other places in case she is asymptomatic but still contagious. So we will confine her until that period of time that we know, and since she's asymptomatic, we'll just do it based on the days versus, you know, I told you last meeting about it had to be, and seven days from onset of illness plus three days from fever with no medication to decrease fever? Well, since we don't have that timeframe, we'll just do 10 days, um, because we don't know. And I think that's the other part with this disease. It is so new, it's, we don't know. You know, we're learning every day. We find new data as we're going forward, but a lot of this, we're just having to make a best guess. You know, look at other states, look at other countries, and, and everyone's a little different because our immune system's different. You know, some people are more susceptible. Um, this, this is a younger person that's healthy and, you know, luckily they're not ill. They had lots of exposure though, from the, from where they worked. Um, all the other three cases I did not mention, but all the other cases are recovered and back to essential job duties?
Concern for me, I'm, I'm not a genius by any stretch of imagination, but know a little bit about statistics and numbers. If, if we, if we test more, we're not gonna compare an apple on an apple. We're gonna have a whole lot more tests and a whole lot more positives than we had the other way. So in essence, by testing more, it's gonna look like we're not doing as good a job because statewide, we're probably gonna find more cases. So instead of looking like the curve is flattening, it's gonna look like the curve is right angle.
Your, your point is well taken. And a lot of that curve, um, documentation is also based on the hospitalizations. Um, and we've seen statewide, there's 93 counties so far that have, have reported a case that keeps inching up. And there's 373 hospitalized, which is down. Friday, there was 429 hospitalized. So they're watching several levels of statistics, definitely that hospitalized, because the whole reason behind, um, extending this curve was to not overtax the healthcare system so that we made sure we had ventilators and we had the healthcare equipment to take care of our residents. And we have not overtaxed those systems. There has been enough supplies, even in New York, there's been enough supplies. But that's the point of this, um, lengthening that curve.
That's very covered. Sorry.
Go ahead.
I thought you were finished. I'm sorry. That's a great, great to know though then that the, the, the really critical statistic is the number of hospitalizations and not necessarily the number of positive tests. That, that gives us a little clearer picture maybe. Thank you.
Certainly.
Doug, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, just as Leanne was saying, we wanna thank SureTape because they did give us right at 2,000 N95 masks. And right now with that, we do receive those on Friday. Right now with that, we are getting some of them out to our local fire departments, uh, for the volunteers and stuff like that. We also have received, I know you know, in the paper, we received some supplies from North Carolina Emergency Management, uh, a couple, or about a week ago, for about three or four days in a row. So we are getting supplies in and we want the people to know that supplies are coming in. It's taking a little bit of time. We've ordered some more supplies over the last couple of days, or over today and, and, uh, Friday. Some of them are coming in today, that we ordered one today and they come in in this afternoon, or maybe later on today or first thing in the morning. And some of them are taking a little bit of time. But we have, at this time, when I looked at our PPE, your personal protective equipment supplies, I think we're, we're, we're good with it. I'm not gonna say we're great with it because, like we said earlier, we don't know how long this is gonna go on. But they're still recommending surgical masks and eyeglasses for protection and that puts you in the low risk through CDC and also through the North Carolina Office of EMS. We did a, uh, worked with Gary last week because we are seeing some problems with the food pantries and stuff. And we did a, a code red, or we added that into the code red. And, uh, we do have a, uh, food coordinator here and we have a donations coordinator here, Mr. Howe, Mark Howe. And we are getting numerous calls over the last day, or today, to saying, what do I need to do? Who do I need to bring it to? And we're putting that into effect. But for right now, we're running, just as we are normally, we're running about the same amount of calls. Uh, and my guys at EMS are telling me if they feel like this patient's possibly positive or possibly could be one to be tested when they take them to the hospital. And I haven't seen an increase in that. Uh, so people are doing what the governor says. And if you feel sick, contact your family provider or call the hospital and they're probably gonna tell you to stay at home and isolate. Any questions?
Great job, both of you. Yeah, I think, uh, I, I just wanna commend everyone in the county, businesses, uh, our, our EMS, our health department people, um, everyone involved. All, you know, just the citizens, everybody I think is taking precautions. You know, you're not panicking, but you're taking precautions. I think that's what's really helped, uh, slow this thing down in North Carolina. So, uh, everyone seems to be, uh, taking this seriously and, um, you know, keeping six feet away. Making sure, you know, you're, you don't let too many people in your business at one time, cleaning, uh, sanitizing. So everyone seems to be doing a good job, from what I've seen.
Well, I was gonna mention to you, uh, all you commissioners, uh, we're gonna start bringing a few of our maintenance, uh, employees, recreation employees, and our Rocky Face employees back, start easing them back in. There's, uh, we have a total of five maintenance, uh, employees currently. So we plan on bringing all of them back by next week. Um, they don't usually work together. They won't drive together, but there's a lot of work that they can do. And it'll be really good in some of the buildings since we don't have full staffs in those buildings. Likewise with recreation and Rocky Face Park, uh, we haven't really addressed a lot of maintenance in the parks and we wanna start doing that. And especially at Rocky Face Park, uh, I talked to Alicia Stamey, our director of Rocky Face. And with what is, uh, going on, we think we could possibly open up the park, uh, Rocky Face Park, that is. But we'd have to have some restrictions. There would have to be for social distancing and the things that we've talked about. The, there could be no use of the playground equipment or the bathrooms. I would, uh, suggest they stay closed. That they cannot use the picnic shelter. They're there just to hike the trails pretty much, or the paved trail in the quarry. And, you know, we use, we have received state money to help us build the park. So I know if there's any concern about outside, because we have a lot of people from outside that use, use that, we just have to monitor that. We would not allow rock climbing for a while, but it'd just usually just be used for trails and the quarry trail for hiking. And we're gonna, we would start working on that. Uh, I don't have a date to open yet, but our report to all of you will be done, if you're fine with that.
Question, Rick?
Yes, sir.
Uh, did you mention the public restrooms?
Yes, I did. They would be closed.
Okay.
What about, um, you alluded to it, so since we received state grant money, there's no way to restrict people from out of state, I mean, um, out of,
County.
That are not, that are not county citizens from coming there?
I don't, I don't think so. We'll double check, but I, I'm about positive we cannot do that since we receive state grant funds from part of. So, um, I, I talked with Alicia today and we'll continue to talk during the week. I guess there's a chance that we could be open by the weekend, but there's a chance we may not. I don't know if there's been any damage on the trail. Last week, we had a bad storm and I don't know, we had trees down, so that needs to be cleaned up and there's other things that need to be addressed. But I, you know, we're getting a lot of calls about Rocky Face Park and I know a number of you are getting calls about it. But with those items not being used by public, if you can't use the picnic shelter and the playground equipment is roped off and you can't use the bathrooms, you just basically go there and, and, and use the trails. So, um, the thing that sort of is our curse in a sense with our park is that's so popular. Uh, I think the last weekend, we had almost 200 people at, at the park and we, you know, that's, that is certainly too many, but it's 300 acres. So, you know, people would be spread out. We just hear something we're gonna have to work on. But before we open, we wanna, we'll contact you guys one more time before we go, okay? Gives you time to think about it.
You know, I would just like to say, you know, if there's any way possible, if, uh, if we can, you know, just make, excuse me, just make it so Alexander County citizens go there, that would be preferable to me because half of our visitors are outside of Alexander County.
The emails I receive are from outside the county. Most of them won't know about the status of the park, but I, we'll check it out and make, be sure.
Okay.
So it'd be a couple of weeks probably before that.
I think it could be as early as next week, if not sooner. I, I just don't, I haven't, she just, they went out today and I'm not sure the status. I haven't talked to her. I'll talk to her tomorrow. I'll let all of you know before we do something.
All right.
That's all I have unless there's something else about the.
Well, I, I would just say, uh, since we're talking about the COVID-19, there's, um, there's gonna be a push statewide to let counties decide, um, if they want to be open or if they wanna be closed. And, and also I'm hearing that it's looking like it may be, um, regional too. So our, our region, which is under the Western Pembroke Council government's, the Unifor area. So the state's broken down into different regions like that, that, you know, maybe it would, uh, be regional. We don't really know what's gonna happen now, but I would, you know, I think all of you know my position on this is that, um, we know what's going on in Alexander County better than what they do in Raleigh. So we ought to be able to open up when we think that, you know, the time is right. And if, you know, if, uh, the data comes back that is looking bad, then we should be able to close up or put restrictions on, you know, certain businesses. That's my take on it. I don't know what's gonna happen, but, um, I'm, I'm wanting it to, uh, I, I would like to see counties to be able to decide on their own because, uh, some of the mountain counties, they've not even had a case yet, so.
Okay. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
With that being said, I know that you and I have had a discussion and we spoke earlier today about this, uh, I think, you know, we talked about sending the letter to the governor requesting that they allow the counties to open up from their, uh, make that decision on what they'd open up and what they wouldn't. Uh, I think along those lines that, you know, writing the letter, I think is fine, but I also think that we need to make sure with our health department and the committee that we have had that's doing that, if, you know, to get some rules and regulations that would go, uh, how we would open up and give us some, uh, guidelines and what we should do. Because I agree with you. I think the state's getting ready to open up. I know today in the, uh, in the trucking industry, that there was more and more companies starting to open up, especially here in the Unifor area. Uh, and then Greensboro, Winston-Salem area, they're opening back up and they're putting their employees back to, back in there. Yeah, because I don't know which is worse, the virus or people not being able to get a paycheck and take care of their children and look after them, putting food on the table. Because, uh, I think it's probably important, uh, that they maintain some type of living standard that they're sort of accustomed to. Because, uh, not only with the virus that we would have, you know, depression's a terrible thing when a man can't take care of his family the way he's been accustomed to doing. So therefore, I mean, I think it'd be good to write that letter for the government, uh, and say, you know, asking that the counties make that decision along with the guidelines that comes from the committee we have at the health department and with these folks. And also in saying that, that they've talked about SureTape. I know Taylor King made some masks for some folks. Some other industry in the county here have done some thing, but I just really wanna say thank you to our local industry that stepped up to the. Some other industry in the county here have done some thing, but I just really want to say thank you to our local industry that stepped up to the plate to assist, uh, our emergency personnel, uh, with the mask and with other things that I know that some of them have done. And say, thank you very much for supporting Alexander County and its employees and the citizens of this county. And, uh, I want to make sure I got that in there. Uh, just say thank you to them.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Yoder. Uh, does anyone else have anything they'd like to add about COVID-19 before we move on?
Chairman?
Yes.
When I go over, I certainly hope that everybody remembers, uh, all these wonderful people that have been on the front lines and our restaurants that have stayed open and maintained drive through businesses that we've all, uh, supported more during this time. There's no reason we, uh, should not continue to support them, uh, in the aftermath as well. Because we've had some people who've stepped up big time and, uh, been really thankful for the efforts from everyone. We need to continue as a community to support all those folks.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Beal. Commissioner Reese, I think you was trying to say something.
Uh, yes, I just, uh, in reference to the letter, I think that's a good thing. Uh, yeah, we need to open the county back up and I know I see a lot of people in different places and, you know, being without a paycheck's not too, too bad for a few days, but the longer it goes, you know, the worse it gets. And especially for our county also, but I think we should be careful that we don't, you know, forget Raleigh because that's where our money stream's coming from. So, you know, as long as we make them aware that, you know, we're ready to open up. You know, and, uh, in stages and phases, you know, you just like to talk about. And I think a lot of people are already doing some of those things. I talked to some places that are actually essential and they're taking summer, taking temperatures, you know, already, uh, you know, to make sure that things are good. But, uh, but yeah, I thank all our people in our businesses and the industry for, you know, hanging on. And, uh, I know as far as the restaurants, we've tried to take out and pick up from different places. And it's, uh, a lot of places, you know, have lines. And I know we had a report from the cog and I thought that was pretty interesting where Catawba County is being hit harder than us on their, uh, mobility and the people coming in and I guess the taxes that comes from it. So, and they were actually talking about, you know, they thought it was because Alexander County was not driving to Catawba to eat out, you know, dine out and buy things. So, uh, it's kind of a whole different situation, but, but yeah, I think we, you know, need to try to do what we can to move forward on getting back to somewhat normal. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The, um, I do want to caution our folks, um, even if Alexander County did have the ability to start, um, uh, opening up some businesses, especially manufacturer, manufacturers. The manufacturing industry I worked at for a lot of years and, um, it doesn't rely on just our county opening up. It relies on the rest of the world doing the same. Um, even, even things from parts or supplies, materials coming in or those areas opened up. The product that's being made here in Alexander County and being shipped out to places. Are they full where they're going? Are they start stockpiled here already to get that, um, uh, bottleneck effect going? And it, uh, it's really hard. So hopefully our country does some type of unified systematic reopening of businesses because that will come into play and it may be that we can be open, but the businesses will find that they can't, they can't run like they're supposed to until some things start to give way throughout the rest of the country, if that makes sense. Uh, even like retail stores, you know, if the product's not getting sold, it's being bottled next somewhere. And I think we will run into an issue there at some point.
And, and I would add this, uh, for anyone listening, we do not have the authority to, to open reopen Alexander County right now. Um, we do, we cannot make that decision, uh, nor can any other county in North Carolina. Uh, if we do get that, um, I would like to see us open up in phases and stages. This pause has been a really good thing in that, um, it gave our, you know, businesses and the public a chance to, uh, get some measures in place to, you know, um, make sure that this doesn't spread like wildfire. So I think we've, uh, I think we've got most of those things in place, uh, most businesses do. So I think we're in, we're in pretty good shape. That doesn't mean that this is over. It's a long way from being over. But we don't shut down the whole country for the flu. This is a little worse than the flu, but we manage around it. Anyone else? Okay. Well, we'll move on to, uh, the next item on the agenda. And Chad, you'll have to put it back up because I don't have the agenda page. Didn't print.
Okay. Uh, item number four on the agenda is 2019 water line extension product, project. Um, we've got Doug Chapman and RJ from, uh, McGill and Associates. Uh, who's, who's going to start there?
Good evening, everybody. This is RJ Mosley. I'll, I'll kick it off, I think, for us if possible. Um, uh, thank you, uh, members of the board and, uh, Mr. Chairman for, for the opportunity to, uh, be part of the meeting tonight. I'm, uh, continuing every time we have a meeting like this to acknowledge, uh, you know, these are some odd times for everybody and appreciate, uh, the fact that clients keep our projects moving through means like this that you all are going through. And I joked a few times, you know, if, uh, if you, if you want to find out how many times you touch your face, tell people not to touch. If you want to make it even more awkward, tell somebody they're going to be on camera and sitting a few feet away. Uh, I'm going to sit on my hands for a little while tonight, just so that I'm not, uh, touching my face while I'm talking. But, uh, again, appreciate the opportunity to, uh, to talk to y'all tonight about, um, a project that I think, uh, has been, uh, some, somewhat, uh, piecemeal over time, uh, in pulling together a few ideas and, and desires for service uh, over the, over the past several years. And, uh, I will ask, uh, French, if he has any, uh, historical input there that I leave out to, uh, to chime in and, and, uh, correct me or, or, or add to if there's something that, uh, that we do gloss over. But, um, I'm going to try to share my screen with you all here and show you an overall project map. I know you've seen, uh, some information, uh, already. What I've got here, when it, when it pulls up and, uh, everybody can see is a, uh, overall project map. There are six areas, uh, we are, um, looking at and talking about tonight. Areas that do not currently have, uh, water service, public water service, uh, in the county. Requests have been made or failing wells or, uh, other systems have been noted, uh, along the way. And so we've got them, uh, primarily centered down around the lake, um, uh, down, down in that area. But we do have the one, uh, the one extension up off of Advent Church Road, um, on Sanchez Road. And so you've got this, uh, overall map that just gives you some rough idea of where they are dispersed throughout, uh, throughout the county. Each of these areas would be connecting to an existing, uh, Alexander County, uh, owned water line, uh, and then extending service for a, a, a distance. The, uh, map here, if you can see, zoom in a little bit here. Numbered those areas, there's no real significance to the numbering, but just to try to help, uh, clarify areas as we, as we work through the discussion. But area one appears off of Sanchez Line. That's a rather short extension, uh, of my comparison with the, with the rest, uh, three services that, that are possible there. And then some other adjacent, uh, currently vacant lines that obviously could also be served, uh, by the, by the future extension or the, I'm sure the proposed extension. Another area there is, uh, in that Maple Cove line, um, also, uh, also, uh, William Reese uh, and Bowman Line, I believe there, uh, nine surfaces that we, uh, estimate could be, could be possible in that area. Area there is, uh, over off of, uh, Klaus and Pearlman, and that actually creates a loop. Uh, the project that is under construction right now for the county, um, actually extends down, uh, uh, down Polyballman, uh, past this area. So it would actually be able to loop to, uh, the, the, the ongoing construction project, uh, in two places. That project, new potential project here would pick up potentially another 10 services that we can see, uh, right now. And then the project area number four there is, uh, off of, uh, Red Hollow and, um, it's not Fox Court. Can't remember the, the other road name off the top of my head, but it is, uh, it is a, a chicken house, chicken farmer who's asked for service back at the end of that, that particular, uh, road there. So that'll be a rather large, uh, customer by comparison to some of the rest of these. Um, there are a total of possibly five, uh, in that area that we see. Project area number five, uh, moves a little bit east over here off of AL Fox and Crowson. Uh, and that area, uh, has, uh, the biggest number of potential customers for, um, that, for the areas that we, we've been talking about as far as an individual area goes, uh, with 16 potential customers. And I think it's also worth noting, um, along AL Fox here, there is, uh, a cluster of meters, existing water meters, uh, that are down at the lower end of AL Fox, uh, there at its intersection with Ringham Road. And so those, uh, those cluster meters are three quarter residential meters that folks have then run, uh, run their private water service behind the meter and up along adjacent to the road. And so they have some service issues in that area. Especially when temperatures get pretty cold for a longer period of time, uh, because those water services that have been installed have since been exposed as the roadway, uh, washed away out there. And so there are some service interruptions for existing, uh, customers there and, uh, some, honestly, some potential, uh, issues on, uh, uh, sanitary, uh, conditions for those water lines. Again, they are right now on the backside, so they're the customer's responsibility, but, uh, they, you know, they are, uh, something that, that, um, could pose a risk to those folks at some point. And then if I move over to, uh, the last, uh, project area there is right down on the, a short extension to pick up, uh, the little cul-de-sac, uh, uh, point there into the little, picks up another, uh, a little, uh, potential customers in that area. And so, um, we can look at, we've got some other maps that are a little more, uh, zoomed in. I know you have seen some exhibits, uh, that outline a list of easements that would be necessary. Um, that's a, uh, another manner that is, uh, relevant to the overall discussion for this, uh, potential expansion. Um, all of these areas are installing water lines, uh, along roadways, uh, but they're, uh, not state maintained roadways. So, um, after consulting with the, um, county's legal counsel, uh, we would, uh, plan on this project needing to acquire uh, some, some right away easements for, uh, the utilities to be installed.
Did you say all of those, um, are on, is it, is that correct? They're not on, uh, public right of ways?
Correct.
One thing, if I can point out something about the history of how we've done some of these in the past. Um, as you know, that in the past, some of the water lines where we would have, uh, people that would have water problems, uh, the city of Hickory would extend lines if we paid for materials into some of these areas. So these real short pieces. But other than a project like this, uh, and we've done a few in the last, uh, 20 years, this is the only way we have to address these, these areas. But the city of Hickory had done, actually done some of them for us, but have not been able to do any in the last few years because of their, um, service requests that they have is so overwhelming. But this would address the most current ones that we have and the oldest one request that we have, which is out on Sanchez. Um, and I'll be glad to try to answer any questions also.
Okay, uh.
Uh, it's, it's somewhat, um, implicit in, uh, Mr. French's answer there, but we do have that existing project that is ongoing. Now the thought process is that contract, uh, construction timeframe, uh, for that contract is, uh, set to expire in, uh, late August, uh, or first of September. And so the goal would be to get this project as a new standalone project, uh, survey, design permitted, and then, uh, ready for confirmation of pricing, uh, for as many unit prices that you can, uh, in that standing current contract. And then the contractor, uh, never really demobilizes from the county, but, uh, keeps, uh, keeps right on work laying more water lines, uh, in, in some of these areas, if, if the county chooses to move forward.
Okay, uh, Mr. French, uh, I already know the answer to this question, but I'm just asking it because, uh, the public needs to know. Um, would this take any property tax money to do this project?
No, sir. It all, all the funds would come from our water funds and we have a budget amendment, uh, prepared in your packet if you so desire. But it only takes water funds, Mr. Chairman.
What can water funds be used for?
Just water.
Okay.
Water lines. And we've been able to address a number of water concerns, construction of water lines and different issues throughout the county for the 21 years, the last 21 years, I know, would only using water funds. And that's, um, only thing, again, that they can be used for. There's no tax dollars involved.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions?
I, I gotta, I just need some help. Um, I'm, I'm all for water and I think, you know, we've said many times, water, sewer and internet is the three big pieces of infrastructure. But if we have 54 customers at a million 380, just 53 years to, I guess. So, you know, that's the kind of question that I get, what someone would say to me, well, how's come you do that when it's, you know, it won't take so long uh, to reap a benefit from financially. So, you know, 54 customers, but does that 54, you know, does that mean that there's a potential for 254 more? You know, I, I don't know. And that's the kind of information that, you know, I'd like to know is what, if we've got 54 customers now, what, what's the potential upside, uh, in terms of development? Is this project going to have an impact on?
I don't know if you're asking me, but I would say that if you take our, the current water, the large water project that we're doing, which is about four, well, over $4 million, uh, then immediately we'll have about 270, oh no, that's exactly right, uh, water customers, but it's as much for that as it is for the potential of adding a lot more customers. I can't give you a number, but we, you know, our goal is to add 500 customers through this process. Um, in all these small pieces of water line, there's potential for far more than if it's 16, there's more, well, there's adjacent property where people could tie into the lines in every one of these, uh, situations where they could pick up a few more customers. So it's not just, and I know you understand that Jeff, but there's, there's a lot more customers that could be tied on to this system just like it is with the current water project. You know, the people that said they wanted service and they'll get service. But in time, we'll really add, um, a lot more. But in time, we'll really add a lot more water customers. Anytime you install water lines and sewer lines, it's been my experience. It's just a, it's just a good solid investment that provides services in the county. But I think you'll pick up a lot more than 54. You'll pick up a lot more than 54. You just won't get all those the first few months were there. You'll get them and they'll come in time. You can't, I don't think you can predict or state, you know, exactly how long that takes. But I'm sure we'll have more. We already have more interest in water right now than we've ever had. There's a lot of interests. We get a lot of calls about it.
And that as well is a little bit of, and just one instance really, but an empirical evidence to that is the current project that's ongoing. We have the contractor working up in the Ned Herman and Dula Loop area right now in that original project. And we, we went through and counted all the possible connections that we could see early on in that project's bid. And so some of those services are going in and then actually just yesterday or today, I'm sorry, not yesterday, but last week or maybe even today. I think county staff and our staff fielded a, an inquiry from a customer who is gonna get a residential connection, but who also has a chicken house behind, behind his residence. And so he's gonna get that three quarter inch service that's just for his residence, but then he's also that two inch service that gives him the ability to draw a lot more water than, than that three quarter inch service does. So, you know, we've got one of those same type or services in the, in this project area is one of the folks who's actually requested service. So those kind of things, you know, do, do lend themselves the, the greater opportunity as if that other, that other project area, just this last week or so.
I'll say too, you know, the, the, the location of that project lends itself to, you know, exponential growth of a number of customers in, in the future years. That's just gonna be a, it's gonna be an area where people want to be at. And if there's water lines down there, then that gives you the ability to, to build a house or remodel a house, not, not have to worry about well water or bad water out of your well. So.
Chairman Mayberry, which project are you speaking of?
I'm speaking of all of them.
The ones that are currently being displayed here?
Yes, yeah.
I've got concerns on the, on our locations that we picked. As far as like Sanchez Road, it deads in. It's a private road, of course, and that's, that's neither here nor there. But there's only two possible clients out there for water. I know one property owner owns from the end of the road to the front of the road on one side. And then I totally agree with the Al Fox and Croson Road Loop. That makes sense. And it does have land out there for potential development. The rest of them, I'm not, I'm questioning why we actually picked those locations because the possibility for growth, in my opinion, is not great at all. And then like on the Friday Cockrell and Rabbit Hollow roads, I see an expense of in the neighborhood of 245,000 and you primarily have two property owners out there to a poultry. So I'm questioning on how we came up with our locations for the expected growth part.
I don't know how the locations come up except for there's been requests over the years, but I'll just say that when, when I said, you know, there's, there's the opportunity for future growth, even though you've only got two property owners out there, you've got some larger tracks of land that may at some point be split up. You know, even if it's a two or five acre tract. Can y'all tell us again how you, how, how these were chosen?
Well, they actually, these have been requests made over the last several years from these areas. And there are either well problems and water problems, problems with existing water situations. And just a lot of different things, but they came from the different, some of the different property owners that are in those areas on all of them. And that's been, that's been over at least four, probably the last four years.
That's true. These particular projects I'm speaking of here, but I know we've done some in the past where they've had arsenic in the water or, you know, that kind of thing. So it's, it's, it's not always about, you know, development is also about, you know, quality of water for people that actually live there too.
Right. Yes, sir.
Mr. Yoder, I'm sorry, did you?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, all thing I'd say is get back to what Rick said there just a few minutes ago. These folks that I know since I've been a commissioner, of course, I missed a couple of years here, but at the same time prior to that, these folks down that area, they have called and asked for water because the water quality was bad and they had poor service and the wells. And the other thing is, you know, the groundwater is slowly but surely slipping away and we don't have the amount of groundwater that we want. But the biggest thing is these folks, folks have asked for water and asked for water for several years, just as Mr. French said. And I think that's the main reason that these were put on this plant. And I know we've talked about it for five or six years trying to help these folks down there. And we did other things that weren't able to help them because at the time we didn't have any kind of funding in any way to do it. And now that we've had more and more customers that have looked on to our water, of course, you know, the water, the only thing you can use it for is is for water projects. But that's what it's designated for, just for the water fund. And, you know, this is our opportunity to be able to help these folks. I, I think it's a good move and the same as I did about Herman Road and out through there, that was a good move. And I think this will assist the citizens. And sometimes it's more about trying to get water of these people that need it than it is about the revenue. And I think this revenue is important. And I think also improving people's drinking water, giving them access to good waters of great value to their life and things of that nature. Cause a lot of the folks down in there complaining quite a bit. Several of them have called me and I referred them to Rick and that's, they just, they just, good water. They just don't have it right there.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, as Mr. Yoder said, I know a lot of people in that area and over the years, you know, a lot of people have had requests and calling and, you know, just as we're going through now, we're failing in a position that we can, you know, possibly help some of these people. If you, if you turn your spigot on and your water's not any good, that's, you know, really not a good thing. And I think from some past projects and I've lived in different places where there wasn't any water. You had wells. Once the water comes through and people see dirt moving, then, you know, sometimes you have some more response, but, but yeah, I agree that, you know, I think this is a great thing. If, if you don't have good, you know, you're, you're really have a problem. So and a lot of these people have been struggling for several years down in the lake area. So I think there's potential for, you know, probably a lot more once it gets started.
Is anybody else having anything?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, for Mr. French, the water fund that we currently have, I guess we have a pretty healthy balance in there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We do. Yes, we do. And those funds will pay for this. Can you hear me? Okay.
Somebody's battery's running low.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's me.
I'm glad that would be RJ's.
Yeah, I thought it was me. That's why I was checking the cord.
I thought it was mine.
I'm glad I wasn't the only one to click close.
Yeah.
That's why I plugged up real quick.
Good job.
Sorry about that. I learned that I don't have a whole lot of warning either when I'm, when I'm doing video like this. It, it tends to suck that battery down in a hurry.
Are there any more questions, gentlemen?
Ronnie walked away, so let's wait till he gets back.
Okay. There, there is a, there is a budget amendment later for this.
Okay. I think he must be thinking that his battery's running low, so he's going to go.
Yeah, sorry. I'm trying to get hooked back up here, so.
When's the decision have to be made on this?
It needs to be made tonight. There's a lot of preliminary work that needs to be done so we can, we can, we don't want to make buck out of it. As RJ said earlier, they'll be finished, the project by the end of July, September. And we will be ready for them. It'll take, it'll take that long to get, get all this lined up for them.
An internet fund like we have a water fund.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah, that'd be a good deal.
Yes.
Anyway.
Yeah, I asked a lot of questions on this deal, but you know, I just wanted to have an understanding. So I wanted to think that I was against them having water because that's the furthest thing. I think, you know, water is a, one of the big three you absolutely have to have, but just curious.
Yes, sir.
Um, so we're just ready to move on now?
Yes, sir. And we'll do a budget amendment. We have a budget amendment later. But unless you have any more questions for Doug or RJ, then I, they can probably sign off unless anyone has questions. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Okay, then we will move on to next item on the agenda. Put that up, Jim. The Alexander County, the Stone Point Sewer CDBG letter recommendation and certified bid tab. Page county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We opened bids on Tuesday, April 7th. There were seven bidders. The low bidder was lock lane construction out of Stoney Point. Their low bid was 582,208.57. There was one alternate bid for screening, which they are recommending that takes the project cost to 644,710.57. And this is recommended by West and consultants. And we need to do two things tonight. Oh, let me also mention, this is under our money that we have for the project. So we're still about a hundred thousand dollars under our sewer project, which is just about unheard of. But we need to do two things tonight. We, if you so desire, we need to approve the recommendation as presented in this letter for lock lane construction to do this work. And we also need a res, a resolution. It's a tentative resolution of tentative award that's, that you also have to approve, which recommends this to the state and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality will have to sign off on this. That's why it's a tentative letter. So are there any questions on the bids?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. French, now, me and you, I think we spent about a day in Winston a couple of times on this project getting it going. So it's been in the works for a while and I'm just glad this bid, you know, it's under, you know, kind of what we're thinking. You never know when you get a bid, but, but I think it's, it's a good thing.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I just have a question. Have we had lock lane construction? Have they done any projects for Alexander County in the past?
No, sir. I don't think they've done any utility projects, but they've done, they have done some utility projects.
Just not for us is what I'm.
It's not for us. Yes, sir.
They haven't done it for us. I, I didn't remember them doing anything in the last 11 years that I've been on the board, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I make the motion that we accept the bid that was the low bid and I might wish we approved that.
Okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I presume that means the alternate A. Point one, the stated in the letter, that's what we're recommending, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we also need to approve the resolution of tentative award on this project.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the tentative award.
Resolution.
Resolution, excuse me. Yes, the resolution. Okay. I was looking at, I was looking at the bid here on the cell phone. So I could stay along with it.
Okay, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. We're ready to move on?
Uh, one other thing I'll add, we have our pre-construction meeting tentatively set for next Tuesday. So we're anxious to get started on this. They're anxious to get this project underway and maybe have it completed before school starts next year. So that's our, that's our ambition in this project. So that'll be a good thing.
Yes.
All right, sounds good. We will move on to budget amendments, number 43 through 53 and the project budget ordinance P dash two. Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget amendment number 44 is to increase the health department budget for federal grant funds to prevent, prepare for and respond to COVID-19. Is, are any questions about that one?
No, sir.
Okay.
Just one question. Where, where did that money come from? What department?
It comes from, it goes to the health department.
I know, but what federal department did it come from?
It, it's a COVID-19 crisis response grant is all, is what I have. I'm not sure unless Leanne can tell us exactly. Is that where it comes from, Leanne?
It was passed through from the federal to the, to the Department of Health and Human Services. Other than that, I'm not sure. It was part of that stimulus package to help medical providers in all states.
Okay. I just wondered what, it's got to come out of a, of a departmental budget line. So I just wondered where that came from, but.
Budget amendment number 45 is to increase the budget for fees required to be remitted to the state based on revenues collected for fees. In prior years, the required fees were accounted for as a reduction to the revenue line item. The 2019, 20, 2020 budget year is its first year of accounting for state fees separately from the revenue collections. The original amounts budgeted are being amended based on, on year-to-date actual experience and estimates for the remainder of the budget year. This is really just something that balances the budget. It's no new money. It's all coming from registered dues. Any questions about that? Okay, hearing none. Number 46 is to decrease the estimated revenue from interest earned on investments during the 2019, 2020 budget year. Interest rates had already started to decline since the same time last year. The coronavirus pandemic has caused interest rates to decline even more, which will cause interest revenue to fall short of the original budget estimates. And the revenue lot item is used to balance the budget amendment is the amounts written off by medical providers related to the 630, 19, June 30th of 2019 estimated liability or inmate medical bills with Medicaid eligibility questions. So it's a reduction of $73,000. Okay. Moving right along, number 47 is to increase the DSS budget for additional Moving right along, number forty-seven is to increase the DSS budget for additional, uh, crisis prevention payment, funding, and additional low-income energy assistance programs, uh, funding received. Any questions on number forty-seven? Forty-eight, to increase DSS budget for donations received in excess of original budget estimate for Karen's kids and donations received to assist families with adoption costs. And that's budget amendment number forty-eight. Any questions about that? Budget amendment number forty-nine is to budget for payouts of vacation holiday and comp time through March twenty twenty for employees leaving during the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty year. The miscellaneous revenue used to balance the budget, uh, amendment is from amounts written off by medical providers related to the six thirty nineteen estimated liability for inmate medical bills with Medicaid eligibility questions. Questions? Okay, number fifty, to increase the detention budget for estimated medical supplies and inmate medical bills for the remainder of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget year due to serious medical conditions that require treatment beyond the, that provided by in-house medical visits. Questions?
Mr. French?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I know that we had to do that increase and everything, but how do we stand with Medicaid assisting in some of these things? I mean, I know that they're still fighting it and trying to do some things. I know the association did it well pretty good, but are, 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 have we gotten any word sense about how Medicaid's going to drop in there and start assisting? Because I know Yak and Ken is going through the same thing. It seems like they continue to have to increase also.
Yeah, I, on these cases, I'm not, Larry, I'm not really sure. I think they, um, there's an additional forty-five thousand that's needed. It's just, it's bills over and beyond. I don't, I don't know that it's from the, from the Medicaid side. I don't believe it's from that. I think it's for something else.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. If I find out differently, I'll let you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think something that we need to continue to investigate, especially the fact that what it cost us for, uh, inmate cost when they get sick. It just continues to grow.
Budget amendment fifty-one is to adjust school capital improvements fund for revised estimate of school capital expenditures for the budget year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty for expected investment earnings lower than originally, than original estimates. Any questions about that? Fifty-two is to budget for fiscal year twenty twenty general fund transfers to parking, uh, improvements, project fund, park improvements at Wittenburg access area and Dusty Ridge access area will take place uh, over more than one budget year, so they are being accounted for in a multi, uh, multi-year project fund. And that, that project fund is actually in a couple more amendments. Any questions about that? That's just moving money out of the general fund into that project. And number, budget number fifty-three is to budget for a portion of the engineering services, design phase and easement mapping for the six smaller water, uh, six water, a smaller water line extension projects under construction, under consideration for construction when the current DEQ loan funded project is complete. One of the water projects is for Beth, is for the Bethlehem Water Fund. The other five projects are for the County Water and Sewer Fund. The bidding award negotiation phase, construction phase, engineering services would be, uh, in the respective water funds budgets for twenty twenty-one, and that's what the, the project that we just discussed. Okay, and the last is the project ordinance is for the Alexander County Park Improvements, and that is for, uh, Wittenburg access area and Dusty Ridge access area. That's for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Any other questions or comments?
Well, uh, can, can you just tell just a little bit about what the park improvements project encompasses? A hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
So far, what it encompasses, it, what it will encompass will be, um, a project to Dusty Ridge that adds a number of trails. It'll clear an area where there can be soccer fields and multipurpose fields. It'll add additional trails. Currently at Dusty Ridge, there's less than a mile of trails. It'll add additional mile or mile and a half additionally of trails. Duke Energy will spend some money on bathrooms and some other facilities, um, like that. At Wittenburg Access, uh, our funding portion of that is trails. Duke Energy will build a swim area, swim beach. Um, there'll be some picnic shelters built and some additional parking, um, those kinds of things. Um, a lot of this is for doing all the permits and all layouts, um, to help us do this, um, these projects. So that's really what it is, uh, Mr. Chairman.
It's really a, um, partnership between Alexander County and Duke Energy, um, on these projects. And they gave us a forty-year lease on both properties. Is it both properties they gave us forty-year lease on? Yeah, so we've got a forty-year lease on both of those properties and, uh, but to get that, you need us to, uh, make improvements out there.
They'll, they'll be, sorry, Marty, you gonna say something?
No.
Sorry. There, there will be some additional calls because this doesn't cover everything, but we want to go ahead and get it in a place where they can get started.
Okay. Uh, any questions on the, uh, budget amendments or the, uh, project ordinance?
One, one question on budget amendment fifty-three.
Yes, sir.
It's, uh, one million, four hundred and two thousand, seven thirty-eight.
Yes, sir.
Up top, it said one million, three eighty, seven thirty-eight. Is it, am I reading something wrong, or did I miss something?
No, sir, that's just, that's something we found that, that was in McGill's contract, I believe. That's the, that's the correct number. The one mi- a million four is the correct number.
Okay. All right, um, any other questions? If you can't tell people watching, I am holding an iPad, so that's why the picture is bouncing around. Um, uh, do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Go ahead, Commissioner Reese.
Make a motion to approve budget amendments as stated by, uh, Mr. French.
Second.
Okay, um, does that include the project budget ordinance, P dash two?
Yes, all of them.
Okay, stuck it, yes.
All right, is there any discussion? Any more discussion? There'll be none. All those in favor signify by raising your right, uh, actually, uh, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, uh, we'll go on to, uh, other business. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, you have a, uh, one of the things you have is a, uh, memo from Guy Curly, um, and this is something you'll see next month, but it's gonna, what it'll end up being is a request for waiver for late fees for business personal property, uh, something that we've talked about before, and you have an email explaining that in your packet and an application form, and you'll, you'll get that. We just want to let you know that that is coming. So, um, that's one thing. The April sales tax, uh, information that we just received, uh, is, is actually on, it's on the, what we received, actually, it's from three months ago, but it's certainly aligned with what we have been receiving. Our current regular sales tax stands at three million, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand and thirty-five dollars. That's sixty-seven percent, um, and we're sixty-six, almost sixty-seven percent through the year, and that's regular sales tax. We budgeted five point five billion, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. We are running nine point two percent ahead of the same time last year. New sales tax is running just a little bit under. Um, we've collected a million, eighty-six thousand and thirty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents, which is a little like sixty-five and a half percent, and we're sixty-six point six, uh, percent through the fiscal year. We budgeted a million, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars with the new sales tax. And that new sales tax can only be used for economic development, public education, and community colleges. And that's running almost seven percent more than last year. We know that's going to change, but that's coming, but it, remember, the sales tax we receive now is from three months ago, so, um, just want to point that out. One thing also I want to point out is that, um, every April, we've been having this, what we call shredded day, and we're, we have canceled shredded day, which is the people bring documents to us, and we shred the, shred that information. And that's all because of the COVID nineteen impact. We'll, we'll do it again sometime, but we're just going to cancel it for April twenty-fifth. Also, I have some budget information. I don't know if you have Commissioner Peele wants to bring up about, uh, the Confederate flag on the courthouse at this time?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Mr. French, the, we've talked about this several times, and there seem to be, uh, perhaps confusion, not on our part, but maybe in times past. The Rocky Face Rangers have done, uh, a variety of different things. They have, uh, I think they've put the flag up, taken a flag down, hung the flag underneath the flag, several different things, but, uh, none of which might not have been the best solution, but the actual monument was made, there's quite a bit of history behind it, but in the, I don't know, nineteen fifty-three or somewhere in there, but there's a place on the monument for their flag. And my motion would be that we allow the Rocky Face Rangers to fly their flag on their monument on the ceremonial days that they do. One of them is the Confederate War Memorial Day. And I think the other one is maybe Robert E. Lee or Stonewall Jackson's birthday. I can't remember which now. But, uh, but to do it on their monument as the monument was designed, it won't be on the flagpole. I think it's a great solution for everybody and ends up being a good, a good.
Yeah. I don't, um, I, I guess I'm okay with that. I don't really know. Um, does anybody else have any?
Yeah, good solution to the issues that have been arising.
And they're, they're, uh, allowed, I, I'm against anyone being able to take the flag down, the United States flag down and put up another flag. Okay, I'm just, I'm, uh, I don't, not for that. But if they want to go out and it's a public place and display their flag out on the grounds, then that's, you know, up to them.
It's on their monument, not on our flagpole.
And, and Commissioner Peele, are we talking about twice, twice, two different days, correct?
One's the May tenth or fifteenth, or whatever that date is, I'm not sure. It's the Confederate War Memorial Day. And the other one was, again, I think it may be Robert E. Lee. It's a birthday in January.
Okay.
Those are the two times that they do that.
Thank you.
And there's currently, uh, flags all around that monument up there now anyhow, so I mean, it's not like we're allowing something that's not allowed.
Right.
It simply takes the question of them not wanting to put that flag on our flagpole anymore. They're going to put it on their monument.
Does anyone else have anything to add?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'd say was, you know, I would like for this to have been on the agenda somehow that would acknowledge that we have this come up tonight. I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but it would give the citizens a chance to let it, but we're going to bring this up and vote on it tonight. That's the only thing I have to say about it, because I think you'd have opinions on both sides. I don't have a problem with flying their flag on their monument at all, uh, but, you know, that's the only thing I'd say about it. You know, it should have been amended to the, uh, to the agenda, uh, so that we would know that this was going to come up. That's the only thing I'd say about it. I mean, I, they called me about it too. The same people's called Jeff called me, so, you know, so. It's, uh, as long as they did all their stuff on the flagpoles or anything, I don't really have a problem with it.
That, that was my fault. Uh, Jeff asked me about it, and we were, since we were short staffed, we really didn't have somebody here. We sort of did the agenda a little bit earlier, but I had that in my notes to bring up, and I should have brought it up earlier.
Oh, that's fine. I mean, I just, I still, I mean, I don't have a problem with doing it that way, because I'm like the rest of you. I don't want to sit American flag taking that for anybody, for any reason. I mean, you know, you pull it down, put it back half-staffed, that's fine for, for things, but not to let any other flags to proceed in any way.
Uh, do you guys want to, uh, put this off till, uh, the next meeting, get some input? I think that would be a better way to go. Is there, is there some sort of date?
You have a motion on the floor, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I guess I do. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion? I'll just say, uh, you know, the Confederate flag, um, is a divisive flag sometimes, uh, but it's also a flag that's a part of our history. And, uh, you know, I, I think these people, uh, are history buffs and, um, they're proud of being from the South. I don't think this has anything to do with the racism, uh, on their part. And, uh, if it did, then, uh, you know, I would be completely against that. But, you know, it's, it's a public place and, um, it's right free speech, so.
Yeah, the monument clearly states on it that it wasn't an issue of slavery. It was an issue of states' rights and self-government.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor of letting them fly that flag on, uh, the, that monument twice a year? Signify by saying aye. Okay, motion passes.
Okay. One last thing I have under the manager's report, Mr. Chairman, um, is a, uh, I guess a change in the budget calendar schedule. I would like to, uh, move some of the dates up. On May the fourth, I would like to submit a budget to the board and, um, and so we could, at our next meeting, that's what we'll talk about is the county budget. And then with hopefully, uh, with some work sessions that we have between that date, we could possibly adopt a budget or would adopt a budget, I should say, on June the first. I, I think this year, um, probably more than any that we've had, um, that I can ever remember with all the things that are uncertainties about our revenue stream, it would be wise to be very, very conservative about our budget. And our budget, our two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget would be very similar to this year's budget. There would be, the only thing that would be in there, there would really not be anything new. There would, um, it would just be like, almost like an extension of that budget, if you, if you will, but it'd be pretty much the same number. But it'll be as conservative as, as we can make it. We would replace equipment, key equipment that we'd have, that we always do, um, but we wouldn't add employees. We would, you know, we wouldn't, there's no extra cost. We've already, you've already approved, uh, a small increase in the, uh, health insurance, which is three percent. Um, and there are other things like that. They'll make the numbers a little higher, but, uh, it'll be a very conservative budget. And so at the next meeting, if you're okay with this, I'll present that, give you copies of it. You all have budget books here. I think we have one left that has not been picked up. And then I'll present it, and then we can set work sessions. Um, the school system has indicated they'll, they'll give us a copy. School system has indicated they'll, they'll give us a copy of their budget Friday, and I'll make sure you get a copy of it as soon as we get it. So I just want to bring that to your attention. If that's okay, I like to move ahead with it. I don't see any reason to drag this out because I think it's pretty straightforward. You know, next year is going to be, we'll make it, but it might be a little tougher, so. That's okay. I have a few things for closed session, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, well, then I make a motion that we go into closed session for North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three eighteen eleven A five and six contractual and personnel issue. Make that in form of motion.
Second.
I got a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We are now in closed session.